Okay, and Chair Chavez, anytime you want to call the meeting together, we are ready to start.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Oxnard Planning Commission regular meeting for Thursday, May twentieth, two thousand twenty-one. We're now beginning at six oh two. A quick housekeeping item in accordance with Governor Newsom's executive order N dash twenty-nine dash twenty. Members of the commission and some staff will be participating via teleconference. As shown on the agenda and and online, please email all written public comments to planning@oxnard.org. For those wishing to speak, may visit oxnard.org/city-meetings to fill out the speaker form or by calling eight zero five three eight five seven eight seven eight by two P M. The day of the meeting. For my colleagues, please use the raise hand feature when you wish to speak. Once you have been called on, please then click the hand again to lower. When making a motion or seconding, please clearly state your last name for the record. Because the meeting is electronic, all votes will be done by roll call. And with that, Madam Secretary, can please have the roll call, please?
Chair Chavez?
Here.
Vice Chair Owejo?
Here.
Commissioner Connolly?
Here.
Commissioner Lopez?
Here.
Commissioner Meyer?
Here.
Commissioner Nash? Commissioner Nash? Commissioner Sanchez?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Colwitz, do you mind leading us in our pledge of allegiance this evening?
I would be glad to do so, and thank you, Chair. So if everyone could rise and put your hand above your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that, Mr. Colwitz. We'll now move into public comments. Members of the public wishing to address the planning commission regarding any item not on the agenda but within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission may do so at this time. The commission cannot take action on any items presented during public comments and will be referred to the commission secretary. All public comment speakers will be limited to three minutes. I see we only have one from Roberto Vegas, Villagas?
Uh, yes, but he's not, um, he's not logged in, so we don't have another one. That's only one person, but he's not on the call.
Okay, if he logs on before the meeting at the end, we'll go ahead and honor that time. So we'll go ahead and move on to our next item, which is our consent agenda approval of our minutes from May sixth, two thousand twenty-one. Commissioners? Vice Chair Reho?
Thank you, Chair. I move to approve the minutes as distributed.
Okay, is there a second? Commissioner Dr. Lopez with the second. Uh, it has been moved and seconded to approve the May sixth, two thousand twenty-one minutes. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing or seeing none, Madam Secretary, roll call?
Vice Chair Owejo?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Connolly?
Aye.
Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Nash? Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Chair Chavez?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We'll now move into our next item, which is our expertise declarations for public hearing items. We'll follow the same format as I call your name, please respond with either a yes or a no. If you respond with yes, please declare your expertise. Vice Chair Reho?
Um, yes, I do, Chair. Regarding agenda item G one Althea Court Apartments at thirteen fifty-seven Althea Court, I drove and walked around the property multiple times this past week. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Connelly?
Yes, I also, uh, I drove past F one, the Central Terrace site earlier this week.
Thank you. Commissioner Dr. Lopez?
None.
Commissioner Meyer?
None.
Commissioner Nash?
None.
Commissioner Sanchez?
None.
And for myself, I too have visited the sites for both public hearing items. So that will be that. We'll now move into our first public hearing item, which is a continued public hearing F one. Project name is Central Terrace Apartments. Planning and zoning permit number twenty dash five thirty-five dash zero one density bonus permit requesting the ministerial approval of the density bonus permit to allow for three concessions pursuant to the state density bonus law and Oxnard City Code Section sixteen dash forty-four ten L and subject to the approval of the planning commission. The three concessions are as follow. Number one, a reduction of the rear ground floor setback from five feet to zero feet. Number two, reduction of the rear upper story setback for residential building from ten feet to zero feet. And number three, a reduction of the required residential parking from eighty-seven spaces to twenty-nine residential spaces and a reduction of the required commercial spaces from three spaces to zero spaces. The density bonuses related to the proposed construction of the of a seventy-three thousand five hundred and thirty-four square feet, five-story mixed-use apartment building with eighty-seven residential units, twenty-nine parking spaces, two thousand three hundred and seventy-five square feet of non-residential space and a two thousand sixty-eight square foot courtyard on a point forty-two acre project site. Proposed development includes commercial space and parking for the residential and commercial on the ground level with an additional four levels of residential units. The applicant is proposing a one hundred percent affordable housing project with all units except for the manager unit affordable to be at least persons and families at a very low income level exceeding the density bonus and exclusionary ordinance requirements. The project site is located at twenty, at two seventeen to two thirty-five East Sixth Street within the downtown land use designation and downtown general zoning districts. This is filed by Luis Hernandez of Many Mansions. And our city staff person on this is Joe Pearson, the second senior planner. For my colleagues, do we have any questions or comments for this item?
Uh, Church Chavez, this is Scott Colwitz. If I could chime in here for a quick second.
Yes.
We wanted to inform the planning commission as well as members of the public that this project had had an appeal that had been filed prior to your last meeting. But since that appeal had been filed, it had has now been withdrawn on, uh, May eighteenth is when the appeal itself has been withdrawn. What that means is the, uh, the prior staff report that we had posted remains, there has been no changes from the, the staff report we posted on May sixth and therefore staff's recommendation also remains the same. So we just wanted to make sure that that was on the record. In addition to that, we have received some public communications on this item. And, uh, Joe Pearson was going to, uh, update the planning commission members of the public of those communications.
I appreciate that, Mr. Colwitz, Mr. Pearson.
Good evening, Chair Chavez and Commissioners. We have received six letters, uh, or six comments on this item before us today. Those letters have been forwarded to each of the commissioners and they will also be available, um, for the members of the public. I'll highlight or summarize each of the letters that we received and also state the name of the person who submitted the letter. The first letter that we received or first comment, um, is from Max Guinness. He's writing in support of the item, um, and supporting, um, the development of a hundred percent affordable, um, units. And then also highlights, um, or identifies that he would, um, support reducing parking standards, um, in the area, especially in areas nearby public transit. The second letter we received was from Phil Luz. Again, he's writing in support of the, um, item before us today and supporting the concessions for the parking. And highlights that the project is important to ensure that we have, um, livable environment for low-income families who serve vital roles in the city of Oxnard. We received a letter from Cassandra Douglas. And again, generally supporting the, the project before us today. Received a letter from Etna Sepulveda with the, uh, carpenters local eight oh five. And again, identifying the importance of local hire and supporting this project. And then a letter from Hermanos Unidos or Omar Vieira Sodana. Again, with the carpenters local eight oh five, supporting the project. And again, identifying the importance of local hire and using, um, trained and skilled carpenters in the community. And then the last comment letter received was from Cecilia Rodriguez. And it was the, um, letter again from the local eighty-five, eight oh five. Carpenter Union, again, supporting the project and identifying the importance of local hire. And those are the, um, comments that we received prior to this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Do we have any comments or questions from my colleagues? Okay, well, Vice Chair Reho?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Um, I have three questions, um, in regards to concession number three. What was the determination calculation for the parking space reduction? I was wondering why is it not more or less than twenty-nine? Is there some kind of rule of thumb or is it based on a formula? Um, the second question is, what was the determination for only one two-bedroom unit? And my third question is in regards to condition of approval one eighty-two C in regards to the annual training requirement. Will you be providing materials or some type of media in a bilingual fashion for residents? And I can repeat those questions if needed. Thank you.
So Vice Chair Reho, um, and Chair Chavez, I do also do want to note that the applicant team has a presentation that they would like to give, um, that I can respond to these questions. And then the applicant team can, um, probably respond best to the, the second question there. The parking itself was determined based on the, the applicant's request. So based on what they could fit on the site, um, that's how they basically came up with that number. There's not a formula. With the density bonus concession, they can essentially request a reduction in the parking requirement. And then also, um, just with regard to density bonus, as this project is a hundred percent affordable, um, and also within close proximity to transit, there are provisions within the density bonus law that would allow for this project to provide no parking on site. However, the applicant is still providing the twenty-nine spaces plus the, uh, for tandem parking spaces. And then enough, um, many mansions wants to highlight why they, um, with regard to the number of units, the one bedroom versus two bedrooms.
If they're going to give a presentation, we'll, we'll hold that if that's okay with you, Vice Chair?
Uh, yes, certainly. Thank you.
Okay, so do we have any other questions or comments? Hearing and seeing none, we'll go ahead and go to Many Mansions for their presentation, please. Mark, do you have the PowerPoint readily available?
Yeah, I can pull it up.
Perfect.
We're, we're actually pulling it up on this side.
That could be, that, that's actually preferred. Scott, thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Just let us know when you want us to advance the slides.
We'll do. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Chair and Vice Chair and fellow Commissioners. Thank you for allowing us to speak on behalf of Many Mansions and on behalf of the Central Terrace Apartments Housing Project. Uh, presenting here with me tonight, uh, who will go into a little bit more detail on the project itself is Mark DeCheco, our architect of record. And here, uh, with me tonight, on behalf of Many Mansions is our executive vice president, Alexander Russell, Luis Hernandez, project manager and project lead on this development in particular, and our vice president of real estate development, Doug Mangas, and myself, Derek Wada, the associate director of real estate. So thank you again for allowing us to be here. So next slide, please, Scott. So taking a step back, I want to just briefly introduce Many Mansions, um, and who we are. Many Mansions is a nonprofit, uh, affordable housing, a nonprofit corporation who was founded, uh, in Thousand Oaks over forty years ago. And in more particular, our tagline is Many Mansions develops and provides quality affordable housing and life-enriching services for low-income individuals and families in Ventura and Los Angeles counties with a special focus on low-income, formerly homeless seniors, veterans, and/or disabled. Next slide, please. As mentioned in the previous slide, Many Mansions is a local nonprofit, uh, affordable housing provider. We were founded over forty years ago here in Thousand Oaks. And to date, we currently own and or manage over six hundred units of affordable housing spread throughout Ventura County and spread throughout LA, or spread throughout twenty properties. Later this year, we will be starting, uh, construction on three new construction developments in the city of Los Angeles totaling one hundred additional affordable housing units. Many Mansions is the leading provider of supportive housing for formerly homeless and disabled in Ventura County. And we also provide our own property management, maintenance, and services, family services, children's services, and adult services. Last year, Many Mansions was recognized by the Southern California Association of Nonprofit Housing, SCAM, uh, which is basically an advocacy group. Uh, Many Mansions was recognized as the two thousand twenty developer of the year and was also one of our projects local in city of Oxnard was recognized as development of the year or project of the year. But more importantly, Many Mansions is a community partner. We are not the typical developer who just builds flips and leaves. As I mentioned earlier, we're here for the long run. We provide onsite services and life-enriching services. We provide our own maintenance, property management, and our own, we do have our own property manager at every one of our developments who lives on site every day. Next slide, please. This particular project, uh, is the project of the year, as mentioned in the previous slide under SCAM. This particular project is located in South Winds, Oxnard, at the cross streets of Saviers and Wyman Boulevard. And this particular project called Ormond Beach Villas is a forty-unit development spread throughout five different separate buildings and is dedicated to housing homeless, low-income, uh, veteran families, uh, homeless veterans and chronically homeless veterans. This is also the first permanent housing, affordable housing for veterans in the entire county of Ventura. And Mark DeCheco here with me tonight was also the architect of record for this particular development. And we finished Ormond Beach Villas in September of two thousand nineteen. So with that, uh, I want to hand it off to, uh, Mark DeCheco, again, our architect of record to go into a little bit more detail about Central Terrace Apartments. So, Mark?
Uh, thank you very much, Derek. Um, Scott, if you could advance a slide one, please. First of all, thank you very much. Uh, I'm going to keep my comments really brief. Basically, uh, first of all, thank you very much, uh, to the commission. Thank you also very much to the staff. That we're really excited about bringing this project forward. We've been, the process, the city process at this point was, um, as, as we've gone through the process, very thoughtful, very iterative. It involved many different stakeholders, but the city was a partner, what we feel is was a partner all the way along throughout this process. You can see in your staff report even, uh, how the process, uh, how the project has sort of, uh, developed and grown over time in terms of what it looks like, how it functions. And, um, and we believe we had a really sort of, we ended up with a project that was much better because of the input that we received from the community as well as from the city. So again, thank you very much for that, um, especially the staff level that very supportive and very much a, a, a team player as far as getting us to this point. I'm going to focus my, um, comments more on the density bonus because the, the purview and the, and the focus for the planning commission is the density bonus itself. So I'm, I'm going to keep my comments more related, uh, to the density bonus to keep them quick. But just to give you an idea, if you can see, if you look to the left and you can actually see the footprint of the building as it relates to Metta Street, Sixth Street, um, the alleyway to the, to the west of it, which is your, the right side of your page. So get an, uh, a better idea of where the project is located on the site. Directly behind us or to the north, which would be the upper part of the page, is a, is a lot, um, that Many Mansions is currently in negotiations with the city over, uh, acquiring. And then there's a future project that we're looking at directly north of that, uh, as well. If you go to the next slide, please, and I'm going to focus again on the, what the density bonus concessions, uh, that we asked for and what generated them, and then I can answer, uh, Vice Chair's, uh, comments while we're doing that. And then certainly I'll, I'll be available for comments after any questions, if any of the commission has questions afterwards. So the, um, the first density bonus concession is the rear ground floor setback. And so what you can see is on the right-hand side is basically the ground floor. The colored floor plan that you see is actually the ground floor that does have the parking, um, as well as the, the dotted line that goes around it is the site. And you can see because this is an infill, uh, dense project in the, in the city's, uh, recently approved downtown code, we had to meet all the code requirements for building to setbacks, things like that. One of the, the reason for the rear yard setback is to allow us to have as much parking on site as we could possibly get and not have a five-foot strip of land, what would be on the top edge of your, uh, on the top of the page on the on the top of the page on the north side of the project that was really end would end up being a no man's land over time. We fit, we figured it would be more appropriate to build out to that edge if we could. To make sure that we got as much parking on site as possible. So that's that. That's the reason for the ground floor setback being being reduced to zero feet. It is, it was, it's it's zero feet on this side. But it now is zero feet on the side and the rear to allow more parking. But but of note is all of that parking is enclosed within a garage. Now, as you go up, the next setback that we're asking, the concession we're asking for is a setback for, there's a residential setback requirement in the downtown code as well. But what I would enter, what the the only item there is the only part of that setback that is that is the only part of the building that encroaches into that setback is a stairway. All of the individual residential units still meet that setback requirement. So it's only that stairway that's located in the area that encroaches into that setback. So light and ventilation windows and things like that do look out onto that 10 foot setback. And because this is a podium project, that also allows for around that completely to the west, which is a left of your page, as well as all the way across the back. There is basically a raised promenade that is that can be used by the residents to walk around. And actually, we actually have that landscaped. So that's something that's actually useful as exterior space. And then that's fine. You can go ahead and forward this line. That that'll be fine too. Because I'm going to wrap it up with the reduction in parking. In the downtown code for a studio or one bedroom unit, we're required to have one parking space per unit. There is in the downtown code, the ability to actually reduce that parking as well. But with a density bonus, we can, as as staff mentioned, we can reduce that parking for 100% affordable project, we can reduce the parking down to zero. We didn't necessarily go that route. We wanted to make as much, put as much parking on the on the on the property as possible, but to meet all of the other requirements for the downtown code itself and to be a good neighbor, we put as much parking underneath the building we possibly could. And also, as as Joe mentioned, we have, there are actually 33 parking stalls on site. But only 29 of them are counted toward our parking requirement because four of them are actually in a tandem configuration. So having reduced parking, especially within walking distance of the transit center, we are also within walking distance of of other services. Such as healthcare services. Grocery stores, things like that are are also within walking distance of the site. So we figured that to the extent we could, we provided as much parking as we could and still still met other downtown code requirements. But for this type of project and even for the type of tenants within this that the the residents that would be living here are less likely to own automobiles as well because of their income level and other other restrictions that we can, that many mansions can talk about if if necessary. We felt that this was a pretty good compromise. And again, so that's that's where we are. And again, thank you very much for allowing us to bring this project forward to, and I'm certainly available for any questions that you have. In addition to that, oh, and and I'll have, if Derek, if you could please address the vice chair's comment about why one bedrooms versus two, from your perspective, if you would, please.
I'm sorry, if I could clarify a one two bedroom union. So I just wondering if, why isn't there more two bedrooms? That's all. Thank you.
Yeah, based on, based on the the residents that that will be living in this space, the only two bedroom unit is the is the onsite living manager's unit. That's why the that's why they're, they would all be what they would all be one bedrooms otherwise. But we, because there is a resident manager that actually lives on site, there's a two bedroom unit for that, for the resident manager.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that the end of your presentation?
Yes, it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. And I apologize to my colleagues in the public. I forgot to mention in accordance with measure M. That staff's presentation will not be presented tonight. This was the applicant's presentation. To view the staff's presentation, visit the city's website or YouTube channel for that. Again, this is in accordance with measure M. Is there any questions or comments from my colleagues towards the applicants or city staff, Commissioner Dr. Lopez?
Yes, thank you. And thank you to the applicant for that presentation. I'm glad I waited until after the presentation because you certainly answered a couple of the questions I had, particularly around the concessions, one and two, and why you all were seeking those. In terms of the parking, I'll say upon first read before even looking at the the staff presentation that was provided, that was one of the the points that was glaring at me for for many reasons. I think we tend to see what overcrowding. Especially when it comes to parking tends to do to a neighborhood. You know, just some indirect effects that that can come of that, you know, some some crime and and other indirect effects of of reduced parking or over parking. But after seeing the presentation, you know, I have to say that I was I was certainly pleased to hear and learn a lot of the points that were included. In terms of the parking, are those going to be assigned parking spots or are they for a combination of for guests as well?
They're not, they're not assigned. Typically, when we have more parking, we'll sign one space per per household. And then everything else will be for guests. In this particular instance, it'll be first come, first served. But to answer your questions a little bit further about the parking, one of the things we didn't talk about is you know, we're looking to reserve a good number of the units for households that were homeless and disabled, which further kind of accounts for the bedroom mix, the unit mix that vice chair mentioned. That's so we looked at the unit mix, we looked at our waiting list, we looked at the population that we're serving. And same thing with the parking, we looked at our existing parking, we do a lot of housing for the homeless and disabled. So we kind of looked at what do our residents typically have? What is the neighborhood? And one of the cool things too, that we, from a funding perspective that we haven't mentioned, we're going to be applying for what's called affordable housing and sustainable communities funds. And that's actually going to bring in additional money to the city to improve public transportation. There's going to be Cal Vans, there's going to be money that's going to help. If we're awarded, obviously, that will actually help improve the sidewalks and the actual transit center itself. So that's going to be a joint application with the city next month, if everything continues to go to plan. And so that's another way that we're actually helping to improve this particular neighborhood. And additionally, we're actually even exploring building a pocket park in between this project and the project next to it. Because we know there's not enough parks in that neighborhood. And that's another reason for the lack of setback there was we didn't want to, we we didn't want to waste that space. So there's kind of a, we're kind of looking at this as hopefully a two phase project over time. Obviously, we're only considering the first phase tonight. But it's kind of a broader way to improve the the neighborhood itself.
No, certainly. And thank you for sharing those details. I I certainly, I mean, think that you know, just given the need for affordable housing, you know, the fact that all 100% of the units will be for low income or very low income. You know, a couple of meetings ago, we actually went over the housing element and looked at and considered arena numbers. And so the fact that this moves us towards that goal, I know previously I have advocated for just smart, sustainable walking communities. And so, you know, just given the location, given proximity to public transit, you know, not only bus, but train. The businesses, you know, I I I think it is a a wonderful design. Question about the building architecture. I know it was in stated that it was art deco. Just question for staff, is this consistent with just downtown goals for for design that have been discussed in the previous years?
Commissioner Lopez, actually, first to kind of go back to your previous comment. A condition on the actual downtown design review permit does require a parking management plan. And so we'll be working with many mansions to develop that plan through the plan check process. And then to your comment about the architecture, the downtown code identifies six, yeah, six architectural types that are allowable in the downtown area. And then the art deco is one of them. And then the design is basically, the building is designed to comply with the standards that are outlined in there.
Certainly. Great, thank you.
Lopez, if I can just add to that, though, we did bet this this, the design, and it was, again, it was an iterative process and we had the downtown. There were multiple downtown groups that that we engaged to provide comments and provide direction in terms of what the ultimate building architecture ended up being.
Yeah, no, certainly. Just some concluding thoughts here. You know, like I mentioned initially, I had some serious concerns around, you know, the three concessions, particularly the the parking. But after the presentation, just seeing the number of units. You know, and all factors considered for the general public, I do want to also just highlight that there were over 200 conditions on attachment E that were indicated. So these are general project conditions, last landscaping standard conditions, planning, housing, development, environmental fire, police conditions as well. Last meeting, we had a presentation from our fire marshal. And so, you know, just I appreciate those other departments being consulted, especially to take into consideration public, you know, health and safety. And so just thank you so much for for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Well, this this is Scott Collett. I'm going to jump in here really quick with the housekeeping item. Where we are on the agenda, this is really questions back to the applicant or staff at this point in time. We do have some members of the public that are on the call that would we would open up the public hearing for them after we finish the questions. And then after that, then we go back into deliberations on the project itself. So this is really a time for questions, primarily.
I apologize for that, Mr. Collett. So it was my comments of requesting comments or questions. So thank you for getting us back on track. So we'll move to Commissioner Meyer.
Thank you, Chair. My question would be for staff, because I can see that this project is very thoughtfully designed and serves an important need in our community. And I'm familiar with some of the work of many mansions. So I know that they've been a a very constructive and positive partner. So my my question is more around how the parking arrangement will work going forward and how the city envisions us making it work. Given the conditions that we're we're living in. And I understand that this really isn't a just, there's some discretion, but really this is state law and we're supporting state law in in looking at these concessions that we're talking about. And state laws is saying no parking is required in these affordable complexes. I'm I'm just trying to wrap my head around it and envision how that will work. Especially as I think about areas where we have families who are of very low income, for example, like Questa Del Mar in South Oxnard, I know that the parking is extremely challenging for for them. It it seems like it's, I believe, only street parking. And so I'm trying to see how the city envisions this functioning going forward.
All right, Commissioner Meyer, thank you for the question. I'm I'm going to jump in first, but this actually might be a three part response with myself, Joe Pearson, as well as the many mansions team. So there's one aspect of this, one perspective, which is the downtown code itself, and what's the vision for that? There's a second portion of it, which is specifically about the project and and this part, I'm going to kick over to Joe in in just a little bit, is the the parking management plan and how does that work on the site itself? But the third part that I think that it's important for us to hear is from many mansions and who their clientele is. And what they've experienced over the year with their target population that they're looking at, specifically relative to parking on site. So with those three different pieces, the DNA essentially behind the downtown code. There's, there's two interlocking factions. One is downtown is supposed to be a pedestrian first sort of neighborhood, if you will. So we're looking at minimizing the pure number of vehicles that are down there. We're looking at enhancing the public right of way. And we're looking at strengthening the connection with multimodal transportation, really taking advantage of the the transit center that's located downtown. As part of that, the downtown code was looked at the amount of parking that already exists downtown. And there's, I I forget the exact number, but there's a large surplus of parking, public parking spaces that currently are not used. And trying to stimulate growth in the downtown, the essential idea was let's leverage the public parking spaces that are out there already today. Remove the constraints of providing parking and real estate that goes along with that on these individual project sites. And really stimulate growth in that manner with the idea that we're going to be building an environment that really is pedestrian first for all activity to living and working and playing to be able to be occurring downtown. So in that sense, the very opening preamble of the downtown code talks about essentially what I would summarize as a park once strategy. Or or potentially not at all, depending on who who's moving down there at whatever income bracket. It's quite possible that in the future, you might not need a vehicle whatsoever to live downtown. So that's my quick answer about what the vision of downtown is. I'm going to kick it over to Joe then to talk about the parking management for onsite itself. So, Joe, if you want to take it away.
Sure, Commissioner. Just to kind of look at the project itself, more specifically, in the downtown code in general, the downtown code. As I believe Mark had mentioned, requires one parking space per unit for the the one bedrooms. And in that requirement, there is an allowance for paying an annuity. So essentially, they could pay for half of that space as an annuity. So for this project in particular, they'd be generally required to have 87 spaces, but with the payment of the annuities, that could go down to 44 that would be required onsite. And that would be in compliance with, again, the downtown code. So they're providing providing 33 if you count those tandem spaces. So the reduction from what the downtown code would require as a minimum is not a huge difference. And obviously, they wouldn't be paying the annuity. But again, in terms of the spaces that would be provided on site, again, it's not a significant change. And then with regard to the the actual parking management plan, that would be something, as I mentioned, that would be developed in coordination with many mansions. Again, looking at you know, educating the residents on, you know, parking and then where they would be able to park if the parking lot was full, possibly having the assigned parking. That would again, like I said, explore the options with the many mansions team as we go through the project process and condition compliance process. And then I can hand over to many mansions if they have anything additional to add. But again, there's further clarification, I'm here.
Yeah. So to answer Commissioner Meyer's question, you know, we were very thoughtful about parking. We try to maximize parking at every one of our properties. Obviously, for the reasons that that staff mentioned with this particular site, there there was a unique opportunity. There's an opportunity to improve the public transportation system through the ASIC program. And ASIC actually has very stringent requirements with regards to parking. And if you have too much parking, they penalize you. Because the whole point of that program is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And so by doing that, you know, they encourage fewer parking spaces. And they encourage providing money, not just for the project, but for the city itself, which we mentioned. But some of the other cool things that we're looking to include in this particular project is we're looking to include bus passes for all the residents for the first at least three years, if if not longer. We're actually looking to do a car share program through this company called Envoy, where you can rent a car by an app an hour. You know, you have an app, you go in there, you say, I just need to go to the store. You know, you have an app, you go in there, you say, I just need to go to the store, I'm gonna use the car. So we're having that, which is, which is a cool thing. We, like, like I mentioned, working with Cal Vans to provide over forty new car sharing vans. For, for the Ventura County community. Again, this is an opportunity for people to, to carpool together. And again, reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And we also have an onsite bicycle storage room, and we work with our, our community partners to provide bikes for our residents. Again, as another way to, to reduce vehicle miles traveled. So there's a lot of things that we're trying to do from a comprehensive management perspective. And again, we thought very long and hard about the population we're serving and the unit mix. We didn't wanna, you wouldn't wanna provide three bedrooms, you know, on this particular site, which would exacerbate the parking issues that, that you're all talking about. So we tried to think very thoughtfully about the process and to bring the resources to, to make sure that this property fits well within this neighborhood and within the greater community.
Well, thank you all. Yeah, that definitely shed more light on how this could work. Mr. Russell, I appreciate your, your comments around innovative alternatives to owning a car. That you are exploring in, in terms of ride share and. You know, hourly rental of cars and supporting that, as well as the bus passes. That just facilitates the use of our, our existing bus systems. Yeah, so that's very encouraging, you know. I think with these situations and with us venturing into new territory with, with more people and less parking. Some, the proof will become in the pudding and, and seeing if people actually adopt behaviors. That we hope they will, based on incentives and, and, you know, carrots and sticks. That's always an interesting proposition, but that helps me to understand better the, the plans in mind. Thank you.
Vice Chair, Rachel.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to loop back on my third question in regards to condition of approvals, one eighty-two C. I'll read it if someone to follow along, it's in regards to the annual training requirement for both onsite employees and residents. I just wanted to ask, is there gonna be bilingual materials or whatever medium that's gonna be distributed to them on an annual basis? And if it's not, I would encourage you to do so. Thank you.
Yeah, I can take that. So Manny Mansions has a comprehensive language assistance plan, not just for, for Spanish, but for residents who speak other languages. We do translate all the materials that we provide to our residents in English and Spanish. And we, so yeah, that, that's our standard, our procedures.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for staff or the applicant? If not, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing portion of it. We have about nine speakers. With the first one being Roy Prince.
Actually, Chair Travis, there is only six participants on the call right now.
Okay.
The first one is Eric Christian, followed by Anthony Ventura, and then Chris Hernandez.
Okay, thank you. So we'll go with Eric Christian.
Good evening, Commissioners, my name is Eric Kristen, I'm the Executive Director of the Coalition for Fair Employment and Construction. We are a statewide organization that was formed twenty-two years ago to fight for fairness and open competition in the construction industry. What I wanted to do was identify what it was that was forcing this issue to be delayed to this meeting. When the Southwest Regional Carpenters and their fellow unions have for about fifteen years. Engaged in what we refer to as green mail, which is using varnish extortion or the permitting process to hold up projects. Until they can get the owner to quote-unquote agree to use their services, which they otherwise wouldn't do. Because on a project like this, for instance, what you're going to do is make it something that's not, in fact, an affordable housing project. It's disappointing that the owner felt compelled to cave to the union demands. But we wanted to make sure to use this opportunity to point out exactly what this was. It wasn't a concern about anything else related to the environment or SEQA or affordable housing. It was about making sure the owner used their services exclusively. And discriminated against any other group out there that would be willing to work locally. Eighty-five percent of the local construction workforce is union-free. And they would now be precluded from being able to work on this project, at least in the carpenter services, carpenter aspect or trade. This has been happening, we have a website dedicated to exposing it. It's called Phone Me, Union Tree Huggers dot com. It has been the center of numerous editorials around the state, calling out what it is the unions are doing abusing the SEQA process. California Environmental Quality Act, and how it's made building anything in California almost impossible. We're now the fiftieth least business-friendly state in America, this is one of the many reasons why, and it's outrageous. This has nothing to do with anything but exclusion and getting a way and raising costs, getting a particular group's way. While raising costs, it does not allow for affordable housing. It does not help development, it does not help provide jobs. It helps delay that or make it impossible when you price projects essentially out of the affordable housing realm. So I appreciate your time, I understand that there has been quote-unquote an agreement that's been reached between the parties. But that's exactly what was going on, and my members stand opposed to it, both my union and non-union members. Because it interferes with the marketplace, it makes it impossible to build anything in the state. And it's one reason why California has so many problems economically, not the least of which is a very un-business-friendly environment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll now move to Anthony Ventura, followed by Chris Hernandez. Anthony Ventura.
Anthony Ventura, you're still showing as mute. We cannot unmute you from this side of the phone. If you are on your computer, you need to click on the unmute button. If you're on a phone, star six is how you would unmute.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and move on to the next person, and we'll come back to Mr. Ventura, so Chris Hernandez.
Hello?
Yes, Mr. Hernandez, three minutes.
All right, thank you. Hope everybody's well. Good evening, my name is Chris Hernandez. I am a member of the local five-eight-five laborers' union, a commissioner on the Oxnard Parks Recreation and Community Service Commission. But tonight, I speak as a resident and vice chair of the Five Points Neighborhood Council in Oxnard. I have helped with the outreach in my neighborhood on the Central Terrace Project. And I must say that most of us residents, if not all, were very unhappy with the thought of more housing in this area. The biggest reason is the parking situation. Another thought was, are they gonna contract any local trades? You know, give jobs to locals. And I must say that Manny Mansions did a great job with providing solutions like bus fare for residents. And possibly working on bringing different ways of transportation, like bikes. Manny Mansions then contracted the local carpenters, and I fully support that decision. With many problems throughout our city, I say enough complaining, and let's start supporting a solution. When we start hiring locals on projects like this, we start having positive impact on our community. The likelihood of our residents living in poverty decreases. It increases rates of health coverage and success for a career in construction. Local contractors who are partnered with local trades fund apprenticeship programs, which generate. A stable supply of workers to help meet the needs of construction. Let's keep the funds filtering throughout our city into the hands of our residents and back into our city. And set the example for any others trying to build in our city. Although I'm still skeptical on how the parking situation will end up. I'm still very grateful for the help that organizations such as Manny Mansions provide for residents who are at a disadvantage. And maybe soon, we can get together on bringing a paid parking structure into our neighborhood. So thank you guys for your time, and shout out to the Southwest Carpenters.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. We'll try Anthony Ventura once again. We'll go ahead and move on, and we'll try again towards the end to Gold Coast Carpenters, followed by Jackson Piper.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, staff and fellow county residents. My name is Armando Delgado, and I am a lifelong resident of Oxnard. My immigrant parents came here and as a result of their hard work, they were able to afford a place and remain here. Since I was a kid, I have moved around with, from a furnished garage to an apartment to townhomes, rental homes. Unfortunately, I am now a proud homeowner. I personally know the difficulties of living in low-income housing, and I also know what help it can provide for those willing to achieve more in life. I've been a carpenter with the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters here in Ventura County for eighteen years now. And I have the pleasure of representing eighteen hundred hard-working, blue-collar members of Local Eight-O-Five. There's been much debate over the lack of skilled workforce in the state of California. And we invested much time to operate the only accredited carpenter apprenticeship training program in this area. Tonight, I can confidently state that Local Eight-O-Five has partnered with the developer and its prospective contractors. To employ as many residents as we can on this project. Our members are tired of hearing from so many dissenting members of our community about various problems throughout our city. There are a lot of naysayers out there, but here today, we say enough complaining and let's start supporting a solution. A true solution. Together with Manny Mansions, we are about to tackle issues that include economics, social justice, environment, equity, opportunity, community. And many other topics of Oxnard's interest. Please follow these points for a second. A project like this will have a positive impact on the local community through set goals for local hiring and provisions of education. A commitment to use local labor will decrease the likelihood of working people living in poverty. With good benefits, increasing the rates of health coverage and increasing the success for career construction. Higher wages provide a livable pay rate for construction workers that is consistent with local market standards. Local contractors who are partnered with us fund apprenticeship programs to help train more residents, students, women, veterans. And also some of those members of our society who have had an unfavorable lifestyle and had trouble with the justice system. As for the environment, consultants Matt Higman and Paul E. Rosenfeld note. Local hires reduce environmental impacts, requiring that a percentage of workers reside within the area of the project site. The use of local businesses reduce the length of vendor trips, reducing greenhouse emissions. As the California Workforce Development Board and the UC Berkeley Center for Labor Research and Education concluded. Labor should be considered an investment rather than a cost. And investments in growing, diversifying and upskilling California's workforce can positively affect returns on climate mitigation efforts. So we challenge those naysayers who say we force developers to use our skilled and trained workforce. What is it, what we're asking tonight is the commission to allow this project to be built, exceeding the current twenty-nineteen California Green Building Code. To mitigate the project's environmental impacts and advance progress towards the state of California's environmental goals. We will get it done, together with Manny Mansions, Oxnard will get this done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delgado. We'll go to Jackson Piper. Followed by Reese Holland.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, there's an internet outage here, so I was worried about that. But I am a founding volunteer member of Ventura County YMB. Which is an organization formed to advocate for more housing, especially more affordable housing in Ventura County. And I'm calling tonight to express my support for this project. And ask that you grant these requested density bonus concessions. This project has numerous advantages based on where it is sited within the city of Oxnard. As you have heard already tonight, it is two blocks south of the transportation center, offering both bus service and train service. It is also within easy walking distance of much of downtown Oxnard. Which is an area that is going to continue to grow over the next few decades, probably. And will likely offer a lot of jobs and services accessible to these people that will be living in this project. Furthermore, to the west, immediately across the railroad tracks, is a light manufacturing district that offers potential for additional jobs. Not many cities in Ventura County have the advantage of a location like this. Where it's realistic to reduce parking requirements and decrease the amount of people that might be driving on our streets. I happen to live in Thousand Oaks, our very beautiful architecturally transportation center. Is located on the wrong side of the freeway from our downtown. Oxnard doesn't suffer from this problem, it is actually connected to its transportation center. I think it's perfectly reasonable to reduce the parking on this project and encourage the people that will be living there. To walk, bike, take the bus around the city or wherever they need to go, and not contribute to the traffic in the city. And I also believe that the setback requirements are really not. Should not be a problem to, you know, hold up this project. It doesn't make sense to have setbacks for a project like this. With that, I will yield the rest of my time, but please approve these density bonus concessions. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go to Reese Holland, and then we'll try Anthony Ventura again.
Hello. I agree with all three density bonus concessions and support the efforts of Manny Mansions to develop the Central Terrace Apartments. As has been laid out. According to the Atom Data Solutions twenty-eighteen Rental Affordability Report, as reported in VC Star. Ventura County is the thirteenth most expensive county to live in. And it's counterintuitive to the need for very low-income housing. That, that itself, the, the cost of living is counterintuitive to the need for very low-income housing. And even more affordable housing than that, to support the unhoused workforce population in Oxnard and Ventura County. I support this, but I'd like to ask a question to Manny Mansions. If they've chosen their carpenters based on preference to continue working with carpenters who they've relied on for skilled work in the past. And if so, if there's a concern about continuing. That changing to a different partner would not allow them to maintain the quality they've had up to this point. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Once again, we'll try Anthony Ventura. Mr. Collett, or Mr. Roselle, I turn to you as far as how we proceed with Mr. Ventura.
Chair and members of the, the planning commission, because Mr. Ventura is not speaking either because of internet issues or because he's no longer available. I would recommend you, at this point in time, this is the last speaker, to go ahead and close the public hearing and start your deliberations on this matter.
I appreciate that, Mr. Roselle. So we'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion of this item. We'll ask Manny Mansions if they wish to respond to any of their comments that were presented from the speakers.
No, I don't think we have any major comments, other than there's a question about the carpenters we use. You know, obviously, we hire typically local general contractors who are primarily in charge of, of the subcontractor selection. Obviously, we are working closely with the Local Eight-O-Five, with the carpenters' union on, on this particular development. And we appreciate their support here tonight. So, yeah, at this point, we basically try to hire local and we try to hire people that are best qualified. So, yeah, at this point, uh, we basically try to hire local and we try to hire people that, uh, are best qualified to do the job. So we don't have any, you know, strong preferences other than that, but we are proud to, uh, to partner and, uh, and proud to create local jobs. You know, myself and Louise and many of us actually live here in Oxnard. We're really excited for this development.
Thank you. So at this time, we'll now move into deliberations at this, uh, for the commission. If there's any comments, this would be your opportunity to express those comments or, um, otherwise I will entertain a motion, uh, Vice Chair Ray.
Thank you, Chair. Um, so, uh, thank you for everyone who's contributed to this report and the presentation. I, uh, it was, um, actually about the three concessions, concession three was actually the least concerning to me. Um, I asked the question in regards to parking because I was surprised that there was actually that many parking spaces. Uh, so I appreciate the explanation from, uh, the presenters or the speakers in regards to how they were able to get that much. Um, my concern was actually more in regards to the setbacks, but purely on a safety, uh, safety perspective. Um, and I want to thank this opportunity. I want to thank, use this opportunity to thank Mr. Joe Pearson in regards to withstanding my onslaught of technical questions prior to this meeting, and so I greatly appreciate that. Um, he definitely allayed my concerns in regards to that. If any other public or commission member had a concern in regards to concession three, I'd like to cite, um, one of the public commentators, Mr. Jackson Piper and our own staff, Mr. Colwitz in regards to parking. That's, um, that, you know, uh, this area, although it's not a mixed use building, it's a mixed use district. Um, I'm a strong proponent of anything mixed use in regards to development. Just in regards to parking, residents usually park during the night, commercial usually parks during the day. And so, um, this area is basically underutilized in regards to parking. And though I haven't driven past this address in regards to this particular agenda item in the past, I have, and, um, it, uh, it, uh, the, um, spaces would be more productive in regards to residence or commercial instead of parking, which is in essence usually, uh, a little bit of a negative economic value in a lot of sense. So, um, I encourage all my commission members to vote, uh, for these concessions. Thank you.
Commissioner Nash.
Thank you, um, Chair Chavez. I think that this is a great project at a great location. I do not want to do anything to jeopardize it, but I hope that the city and the project developer can do a couple of things. And one, the first would be to find a way to pr- provide uh, high speed internet to all of the, uh, to all of the units. And the second would be to reach out to the Clean Power Alliance or Southern California Edison to install some EV charging stations in the, uh, in, in the, in the, in the parking lot. So I am certainly ready to support this project and I, uh, I want to thank the, um, our residents for making some, some, uh, some great, uh, public comments and our commissioners for, uh, for their questions. So thank you. I thank you, Chair Chavez.
Commissioner Meyer.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Um, yes, I, I appreciate, uh, the thorough efforts to make this project, um, well suited to, uh, the location and the needs of the community and the city. I, I am glad that, uh, resolution was reached, um, around, uh, local labor and the situation that, uh, that arose there. Um, I definitely, uh, uh, know that, you know, the, the challenges of dealing with, uh, labor conflicts are, are vast and beyond the scope of, of our, our focus here. Um, but I'm glad that, um, the project is able to move forward, um, in a timely manner. Um, and I, I support the concessions, uh, and, uh, I thank you all for all of the time and effort to get it to this place.
Additional comments from my colleagues for deliberation? If not, I'll just make a couple of comments, um, echoing, uh, Commissioner Dr. Lopez, Commissioner, uh, Vice Chair Rayho and Commissioner Nash's, um, in regards to the parking, um, and other anomalies such as, you know, high speed internet, as we know, it's a very essential part and this pandemic has clearly showed that. Um, parking, of course, was the number one thing that stood out to me, uh, very much like, um, Commissioner Dr. Lopez. Um, right off the back, that was my biggest concern. Um, but after hearing the presentation and the alternatives to it, I'm very comfortable with that. Um, as a commissioner that sits on the VCTC, I can appreciate the push for public transit because that's definitely the goal that we should have. Um, and it definitely aligns with our downtown plan. The concessions were a little, um, the setbacks were a little off for me, but after again, the presentation, it was a little bit clearer to have those visuals. Uh, I'm still learning how to read the, the maps and the, the designs and trying to figure that out, but, um, I do appreciate that. Um, and, um, I appreciate reinvesting in our community because that's definitely what it is. And as, uh, Mr. Russell mentioned, that there are many members of the Manny Mansion staff that do live in Oxnard. So it's very important to reinvest that. Um, I would just ask that, um, you know, moving forward, any projects, um, keep in mind of the air quality. You know, this is right behind, um, an industrial park and that also concerns me very much. Um, I don't know if it's all the gray hairs that are popping in my head that making me become a little bit wiser. Um, but I definitely want to ensure that our environment and our air quality and our residents remain safe and protected at all times. So I appreciate, um, the presentation and I, um, I can as well support the concessions as well. Commissioner Dr. Lopez.
Uh, I know I shared, uh, some of my comments earlier, but just wanted to say I appreciated, uh, the points that were shared after, uh, in the presentation about, uh, the alternative, uh, transportation programs or initiatives that you're taking forward. I want to encourage you, uh, wherever you continue to do work here or anywhere to just, you know, really, uh, continue with that incentive. I, I think it goes over very well, uh, especially with the people who, uh, perhaps need it most. Uh, the low income and, and very low income, uh, in our community. Uh, and, uh, second point, uh, to Commissioner or Vice Chair Arrejo's, uh, comment earlier about the bilingual, um, uh, training or documents, uh, that were part of, was it one eighty-two C? If I'm not mistaken? Yeah, one eighty-two C, the annual training requirements and any information. I know you mentioned that you make every effort to, uh, translate those to Spanish. Uh, and here in Oxnard and Ventura County, uh, I wanted to, uh, as, you know, if you don't know, uh, we have a significant, uh, mixstecle community. Uh, and so there's a local organization, MYCOP, that has been doing just, uh, extraordinary work for the last ten years. Uh, I believe estimates are a hundred and seventy, uh, mixstecle, uh, individuals in, in California and roughly twenty thousand in Ventura County, of which the majority reside, uh, in Oxnard. And so just strongly encourage you, uh, to also perhaps establish, uh, relationships or to, uh, reach out, uh, uh, for the, uh, translation uh, of those materials as well. Uh, but thank you all so much for joining us tonight.
Commissioner Meyer.
Thank you again, Chair. Um, a point of clarification, so I understand, I, um, recall that Vice Chair Arrejo, um, mentioned that this was a, a multi, um, a mixed use development site, but not a mixed use development. Um, if I understand correctly, the first level is, uh, is commercial. So, so this actually is a mixed use development. Is that correct?
But, Commissioner, if staff could jump into that one, the, the short answer is yes. The, the ground floor is identified as non-residential and there's a number of uses that are in the downtown code that could slide on into those spaces and just start operating. Um, there might be various tenant improvements that they need to build in engineering, but zoning is very, very flexible for what can happen on the ground level. So, wanted to point that out. I also, there was some comments or questions that were made regarding high speed internet. Um, and I also wanted to point out that in the, um, the approval that the directors already made, there was a condition number sixty-three that requires, um, the frontage of the project to at least, uh, be installed with, uh, fiber optics. So as the city, um, continues to push forward under fiber optics ma- master plan, um, and expand where fiber is, this site will be ready, uh, once those connections, uh, get there. So it very much is in the mind of the city and, and daily thoughts with development projects to figure out how can we connect all of these projects that are going before us. So, just thank you.
Uh, and sorry, just to add Chair Chavez, um, with regard to the mixed use portion of the building and Manny Mansions can, um, possibly add on to this. But they're currently proposing to use that space for their services. So that would be kind of their location for their offices. However, under the downtown code, that could be used, um, as Scott mentioned, for a variety of different uses.
Yeah, and, and, uh, if I could follow up just to a comment also on, uh, Commissioner Nash's, uh, comment about incorporating EV chargers, that'll be part of the Title Twenty-four requirements for this project as well.
And regarding the use of the space, uh, Joe is correct that we, we do plan to use that space currently for onsite services. That's one of the hallmarks of Manny Mansions is, is we don't provide just housing, we provide opportunities for people to thrive. So there'll be free, uh, services for the residents, you know, case management, bike skills training, uh, help with transportation systems, food assistance, video workshops. Uh, so every site that we, we build has some sort of community space where we, uh, provide opportunities for our residents to improve whatever their, their situation is.
Thank you, staff and, and, and applicant. That's, that's very helpful. Um, so if I'm understanding it correctly, there won't be opportunities for commercial development or commercial, um, tenants other than really within-house, but there could be possibly down the road a shift in that.
Yeah, that's accurate assessment.
That's, that's correct. The spa- the space is, will be constructed to where if, if in fact, in the future, that type of use, uh, were to present itself, they could occupy it, yes, without issue.
Okay, and then the, the spaces, the twenty-nine spaces, um, really what's on site is there for the residents rather than commercial, um, businesses attracting customers per se, at least in the initial plan. Okay. Great, great. Thank you. Thank you very much. That, that helps me to understand further how, uh, this is going to proceed.
If there's no further, uh, comments on this, uh, looking for a motion, uh, Commissioner Nash.
I will move that we, uh, approve the, uh, density bonus, um, permit, uh, to allow the three concessions as laid out in the staff report.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Rayho. Uh, sorry, it's been moved in a second to approve the three recommended concessions um, for the project titled Central Terrace Apartments. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing and seeing none, Madam Secretary, roll call.
Commissioner Nash?
Aye.
Vice Chair Arrejo?
Aye.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Chair Chavez?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you and congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll now move into our next, um, public hearing item. Um, project name is Althea Court Apartments Density Bonus, planning a zoning permit number twenty-one dash five thirty-five dash zero three, requesting the ministerial approval of a density bonus permit to allow for one concession pursuant to state density bonus law and Oxnard City Code Section sixteen dash four ten L. And subject to the approval of the planning commission, the request concession is as follow. Number one, reduction of the required residential parking from sixty-two spaces to thirty-three residential spaces. And this is project is located at thirteen fifty-seven Althena Court in the high-rise residential zone. Um, filed by Scott of Lottebacher and Associates on behalf of the Oxnard Housing Authority. City staff again is Joe Pearson, uh, the second or senior planner. And once again to the public and my colleagues, no staff presentation will be presented tonight in accordance with measure M. Do we have an applicant presentation?
Chair Chavez, if, if staff could jump in here really quick, we did receive, uh, comments on this item as well. Uh, very similar groups to the item, those that commented the first go around. So Joe is going to go ahead and, and give a quick summary of this one as well. And then, uh, he'll also queue up the applicant team for you.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Pearson.
Again, good afternoon, Commissioners. Uh, we received three comment letters on this item. They were, uh, again, similar to the previous comments that we received on the prior project. You know, again, state the name of the commenter and then again, give a summary. Again, the first comment came from Max Guinness. And he wrote in support of, um, item G one, um, and supported the concessions for the reduction in parking, um, and also noted, um, that parking, uh, standards could be reduced in the city. Uh, the second letter was from Phil Vouse, or Loose. And again, he was writing in support of the item today, um, and asked that the commission accept the concessions for parking and identified that, um, projects like this are important, um, to ensure we have livable environments for the low income families that serve, um, about a role here in the city of Oxnard. And then the, uh, last letter, uh, was from Cassandra Douglas and also wrote in support of, um, this item, again, supporting the requested concessions. And those are the comments that we received prior to this meeting. Again, those were forwarded to the commission and they are available to the public.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Um, now is there a presentation from the applicant, correct?
No, so the applicant team does not have a presentation for this item, but they are, um, available, uh, for, uh, questions. Um, Ilona Scott is here, um, on the call with us today.
Okay, I appreciate that. Um, at this time, commission, um, any questions of staff or the applicant? Um, and please refrain from the comments. We'll save those for deliberation. Um, Commissioner Connolly.
Uh, it's not a question or, or a comment that I have. Um, I found a, a typo that may be a little misleading to the public. On page three, line ten, it says the development will be a twenty-four thousand nine hundred and seventy-three townhouse, townhome project. Um, and it should be square foot project because that was a little, like I read it and I read it again and, uh, I just wanted to clarify that in there.
It's a lot of homes.
We're not building twenty-four thousand, uh, units.
A lot of homes right there.
Yeah.
Good, good, good for them to be able to fit all of that. Thank you for that, uh, Commissioner Connolly. Um, is there any questions from any other commissioners for staff or the applicant? Seeing and hearing none, um, we'll go ahead and go to our public comments. With our first one being Jackson Piper, followed by Max Guinness.
Uh, hello again. Can you hear me this time?
Yes, go ahead.
Great.
Great. So as I mentioned before, I'm a member of Ventura County EMB, formed to advocate for more housing and affordable housing throughout Ventura County. And parking is definitely an issue that comes up often in housing-related hearings in Ventura County cities. So I wanted to express my support for this request for concession. This property appears to have been existing in the community for quite a while and functioning with its reduced parking available. I can see from the Google Earth image of the site, now that my internet is thankfully back, that Althea Court itself looks like it's pretty heavily like the parking on it is probably pretty heavily used in the image, but I would like to remind the public and the commission that that is pretty much the point of having on-street parking is for it to be used. It is a sort of public space and an investment of the community to provide parking. So it is actually a bad thing if it's not used. Used up, it's just empty space. So I believe between the on-street parking that's available and the parking that currently exists within the project, there is sufficient parking to accommodate the proposed additional unit for this project. And I would highly encourage the commission to approve this concession. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go to Max Guinness, followed by Reese Holland.
Hello, thank you Commissioners and sorry I missed my turn at the previous item. I want to echo Jackson Piper's comments. I'm a member of Ventura County EMB and we support this concession. And also, I I mean, I think just on the merits, it's pretty clear that this is going to cause a very small effect, even if there were a parking shortage. I think it's also a sign that, you know, low-income families often do not have three parking or three vehicles apiece. Vehicle ownership correlates very strongly to income and there's a lot of data that people that parking requirements actually do increase vehicle usage without reducing employment and access to job opportunities and all of that. So I think this is a good example of why you know, our parking requirements, there are lots of projects just like these that don't have the the non-conforming status that probably have a lot of unnecessary parking. They're putting more people into vehicles, creating more pollution, more bicyclists and pedestrians killed, more vehicle drivers killed, and just not a great use of land. So I I think this is a great extra family that will get to live here and I hope you address this, you know, approve this and also work on better parking requirements in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll go to our final speaker, Reese Holland.
Hi there. I want to echo the statements and say that, yes, I I believe the the plan here with the density bonus is a good plan. I think it's the sort of thing where people who rely on bicycles and public transport and ride-sharing will be the ones who are more likely to move in knowing that there's less parking spaces available. And I think there's a lot of population in the area that would be able to utilize that and have no problem whatsoever. So I think the reduction of parking and the fact that there is street parking and other parking in the area makes it a little bit more reasonable. On top of that, if there's additional concerns about, you know, parking and cars in the area, I do like the idea of maybe getting a city-sponsored shuttle service or or short transport service. So that way, people who do have a car they need to use to get around can attend essentially get shuttled back and forth between where they live and where they park. And that public parking could be utilized as more of a permanent parking space for them. I think this is really good and I hope it gets approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, we don't have any other public speakers, correct?
That's correct. We don't have any more.
Thank you. So we'll go ahead and close that portion of the public hearing. And we'll go to the applicants. Ilona Scott for any responses or further comments.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Anne Randall. I'm with Lotterbach and Associates. I've been working with Ilona on the project. She had sent me a message. She's having some difficulty, technical difficulties. She may not be able to unmute or there may be something else. We just, we're, again, Lotterbach and Associates Architects, we're representing the Oxnard Housing Authority. We just wanted to be here in case there were any specific questions about the project. So we'll we'll just, again, we're here to answer any questions anybody might have.
I appreciate that, Ms. Randall. Commissioners, any questions to the applicant or staff on this project? If not, then we'll move into deliberations on this item. Vice Chair Ray Hall.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to comment just specifically on the ADA parking space. I am glad that Althea Courts is doing this development split of the bedrooms, so they have to bring the parking up to code and include that ADA space. So for me, I encourage all my Commissioners to vote for the adoption or to adopt the, to vote yes on the resolution. Just even in regards to the addition to the ADA, I have little or no concerns in regards to reduction of the one space. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Meyer?
Thank you, Chair. If it's possible, I had a a question for clarification to staff. If that is acceptable at this point in time?
Go ahead.
Thank you. So the property, is the property owned by a private individual or is it owned by the Oxnard Housing Authority?
The property is owned by the Oxnard Housing Authority.
I see. Okay. And that condition six that was added that extends the requirement for affordable housing fifty-five years that that begins with this new update to the property?
Yes.
It does. Right. Thank you very much. No further questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanchez?
Thank you, Chair. I'm also in favor of that also, what's in the the parking, because, you know, it's a part, part of what gets triggered when these type of intru- you know, these changes are are done. And this is very positive that now there will be, be one, you know, disabled parking space for the for that apartment complex.
Thank you. Any further comments during the deliberation? None? I'll just make a few comments that, you know, it's always a concern when people see a reduction in parking. Their main concern is the overcrowding. But when you look at the intersection of Gonzalez and Ventura Boulevard, there are four public transit lines that go through that area. So there's not a lack of public transit. There's plenty of public transit. You have four different options. And if I'm not mistaken, the route's headway time between each trip, you know, it's about anywhere between twenty to forty-five minutes on any of those lines. So I'm okay with the reduction. And it encourages people to use alternative methods for public transit. Because ultimately, that's what we want, is for people to explore their cities, not just be trapped in traffic. But those are my comments. If there's no further deliberations on this item, I'll look for a motion. Vice Chair Ray Hall.
Thank you, Chair. I move to adopt a resolution approving planning and zoning permit number twenty-one dash five three five dash zero three. Density bonus subject to certain findings and conditions.
Thank you. Is there a second on the motion?
Second, Commissioner Meyer.
Meyer, second. So it's been moved in second to approve for the approval of the the one concession for the project. Sorry. The project. The, sorry, for the project name, the Althena Court Apartments Density Bonus. Again, moved by Vice Chair and seconded by Commissioner Meyer. Is there any deliberation on the motion? Seeing and hearing none. Sorry, Commissioner Sanchez, did you have a comment on the motion?
No, sorry. Let me take that off.
Okay, thank you. Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Vice Chair Ojo?
Aye.
Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Nash?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Chair Chavez?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you for that, Madam Secretary. You know, I did have a question and it was something that Commissioner Connolly brought up in regards to a typo in the description. What is staff's direction in regards to that?
As part of the our administrative function here, we can make that edit as we're finalizing the documents. So we'll go ahead and and take care of that. Commissioner Connolly, if you could be so kind to to shoot us an email after the meeting, just to make sure that we have the exact typo correct, that would be much appreciated.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you, staff, and thank you, Commissioner Connolly for that. So we only got a couple of more items. I don't know if the commission wants to take a quick five-minute break or if we want to just power through for the rest of the meeting. What is everyone's feelings on that?
Power through?
Power through.
Power through.
Sounds good to me. Let's go ahead and power through. So we'll go on to our next item.
Thank you, Commissioners. I think Ilona and I will probably log off, but thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Randall, for being here tonight. Thank you. We'll now move to item H, study sessions and reports of project name, rules and procedures, bylaws discussion. Our city staff of Scott Colwitz, planning and environmental service manager, and Ken Rosell, chief assistant city attorney. Recommendation that the planning commission received this report and considered creating a subcommittee pursuant to the provisions of the bylaws. So we will turn it over to Mr. Colwitz and Mr. Rosell.
Thank you, Chair Chavez and Commissioners. So this item is here today on behalf of the planning commission. You had previously asked to have a discussion about the bylaws in general. So we're we're here to have that. Essentially, how this item works, it's on our agenda as a broad discussion. So the planning commission is free to discuss that. The bylaws themselves, we cannot change tonight because the way that the bylaws currently read is anything that would be proposed would need to come from a a written document available to the public beforehand. However, we can create a subcommittee if that's the desire of the planning commission. So as we're going through that discussion, the the general guidance that I would provide at this point in time would be the threshold question is, do we need a subcommittee or not? Second question would be if we do have a subcommittee, now what's what's the function of that? What's the intended purpose of the subcommittee? And is there a length of time that we're looking for that subcommittee to operate? So with that, I don't have any other que- questions or comments to to throw out there. I'm going to turn over to Ken Rosell very quickly to see if he's got anything else to add. And then we shall sit back and be available to the planning commission as you're having your discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Colwitz.
Thank you, Mr. Colwitz. At this point in time, I will withhold any further comments to determine what decisions, if any, the the planning commission makes regarding this. And then we'll talk about if a committee, subcommittee is formed, when it would meet and brownout requirements, et cetera. But let's wait until we get further direction from the planning commission, then we're happy to explore those various issues.
Thank you, Ms. Rosell. At this time, Commissioner, I actually like to go to our Vice Chair Ray Hall, since he was the one that brought this item to us. Vice Chair?
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to thank the planning commission for approving this study session back on April fifteen. I believe that in light of the passage of measure M, some sections should be updated so that they are not or could be construed to be in conflict with the measure. Moreover, even without measure M, I would submit that a revision is due for the bylaws. A good rule of thumb is to review the bylaws at these once every five years. And I would argue that accepting the minor amendment of the meeting commencement time made back in July of twenty nineteen, the bylaws have not really been revised since May twenty twelve. While specified and tailored amendments can be submitted at a previous meeting for consideration of the commission, a subcommittee is a better venue for reviewing and revising the entire document. Per section ten subcommittees of the planning commission's rules and procedures, I move that the chair appoint up to three members either at this meeting or to report out those appointments at the next regularly scheduled meeting to a subcommittee charged with reviewing and revising the rules and procedures of the planning commission and to report its findings and recommendations to the planning commission by blank date to be determined.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Is there any discussions in regards to Vice Chair Ray Hall? Commissioner Nash?
Thank you, Chair Chavez. I have a question for Mr. Rosell regarding the consistency of the CAG bylaws and in accordance with with measure, is it measure M?
I'm sorry, point of order, Chair Chavez. I don't believe there was a second on my motion. If there is no second, it unfortunately falls to the floor.
I apologize. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Commissioner Connolly. We'll do a roll call.
Chair Chavez, if I might. This is, this is Steve Nash?
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Nash.
Just just a point of order. Was it appropriate for our vice chair to make a motion before we had any sort of discussion? Or any questions of staff?
I will turn to our legal counsel, Mr. Rosell.
After there's been a motion and a second, then, under Robert's Rules of Order and our procedures, then it's time for discussion and deliberations. Commissioner Nash, I believe, was before the the motion was seconded and starting what we could deem to be deliberation. So it would be appropriate now for there to be a discussion among the the planning commission regarding whether or not this motion is something which the the planning commission would support and whatever other issues Mr. Nash was starting to raise before there was a point of order regarding the second.
So just for clarifications, Ms. Rosell, will we kind of dismiss Commissioner Connolly's second or is the second already on the floor?
Well, the the second is actually required for there to be technically under Robert's Rules of Order. You are not to to start deliberations until there is a motion on the floor. For there to be a motion, there'd have to be You are not to to start deliberations until there is a motion on the floor. For there to be a motion, there'd have to be the motion made, and then it would have to be seconded. So we are following the the proper procedure right now. So this is the appropriate time for discussions and deliberations.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you for that clarification. And Commissioner Nash, we'll go back to you.
Thank you. So my my question to Mr. Rosell stands. I I don't want us to be redundant and duplicate at the efforts of something that might be occurring with all with all of the CAGs simultaneously in in regards to making their bylaws consistent.
I'm happy to address that issue. There has been preliminary discussions about standardizing the bylaws of the various CAGs. As you know, the planning commission is different from from the other CAGs in that it for other certain matters, it actually is not just advisory. They actually make decisions, subject to appeal to the the city council. So there are some provisions which would be different for the planning commission. Unless and until we know the kinds of proposed amendments to the rules and procedures that would be proposed, it's it's impossible to say if these would go beyond what the what the city council would like to see, or are they the kind of updates which are appropriate as Vice Chair Oweho mentioned, based upon measure M, which I, of course, will need to say is subject to litigation right now, and and the city is thinking that it would overturn, but right now it is the the law of the city. So Vice Chair Reho's request to to consider revisions consistent with measure M is is appropriate at this point in time.
My 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 other question would be if if the Vice Chair's motion passes and our Chair Chavez appoints three commissioners, do we do we have the right to to decline serving on that commission, on that committee?
As far as a subcommittee, it is it is something which you cannot be forced to to be on a a subcommittee. So, yes, if you were nominated, you would not be required to to participate. Normally, you know, people go on subcommittees if requested, but it is not something you are obligated to to do.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Meyer.
Thank you, Chair. I second start with a question for counsel. I I guess I'm a little confused with regard to measure M. I thought I thought I understood measure M to actually have been originated by the city, but it was, that was not the case.
It it was drafted by Aaron Star and Moving Oxford Forward. Of course, it was adopted by the voters by a majority. The council did direct outside counsel to initiate litigation to challenge measure M and measure N. So that litigation is ongoing even as we speak.
Thank you. Thank you, counsel. I I was curious if Vice Chair Aruho would like to share if there are any specific matters that he had in mind or that he had concerns about related to the bylaws?
Vice Chair.
Thank you. Yeah, so a couple of them would be, some minor ones would just be in regards to having Roberts' rules as the parliamentary procedure. Right now, it's only suggested or highly recommended to use it. But that's why I noted in my comments that despite even without measure M, I think that there are other revisions that could be done. Speaking off the top of my head and not to limit anything that the subcommittee would say just in regards to the meeting end time. Right now, it's at eleven P M. There might be discussion to make it earlier or later in regards to the speaker or to the format of the meeting. I think that there have been some changes necessitated by measure M that right now it says, I believe, that we have up to three minutes that we can give. But measure M states it has to be at least three minutes, and so that removes some flexibility on our end. I'm sure there are other places where you can add flexibility instead of restricting that measure M unfortunately does. And so I think a review would be a better use, and with a review and revision, a subcommittee would be a better body than something that the subcommittee could report out to the whole planning commission, and of course, the planning commission can accept or amend the recommendation of that subcommittee.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Dr. Lopez.
I just want to say and thank Vice Chair Reho for bringing this to our attention or requesting this report. You know, just simply looking at it from a, you know, good housekeeping, you know, or even maintenance perspective, I certainly think it's good practice. You know, again, just to make sure that we are in conformance. And simply, I would be supportive of a subcommittee being established to review and bring recommendations to the full commission for consideration.
Are there any further deliberations on the motion? I'll just make a couple of comments that I echoing what Commissioner Dr. Lopez said. I appreciate Vice Chair bringing this to us because I believe it's very important to update and ensure that we are in line with everything that goes on in our city. As our Assistant City Attorney mentioned, the planning commission, it's a whole different level from other CAGs. Our commission is not typically known to have subcommittees, but other committees, CAGs do. And I believe this is one of those that could benefit us in order to keep us in line. I I believe I would like to see something in regards to conduct because it's been in past history. Conduct has not been well on the on the dais. So I think that could be something to look into. And then, and you know, I'm still learning Roberts' Rules of Orders, but I feel like our meetings are a little bit more efficient as we are going through them utilizing this tool. It's still a little tongue twister, but I think it's a benefit. So those are just my comments on that. Vice Chair Reho.
Thank you, Chair. Before we may call a vote on the main motion, my motion did have a blank to be filled, and I would request if there is no objection from any other commission members that we some fill in that blank at this time before we vote on the main motion.
Can you go ahead and reiterate the blank for our colleagues, please?
Yes, in my main motion, ending with to the planning commission by blank with the blank date to be determined. In essence, I am asking or requiring an amendment to that blank for a date. And that amendment should be made before we make a motion on or we make an action on the full motion. And so I will start the discussion and propose a date of whatever is the first regularly scheduled meeting in the month of August. And I wish I had my calendar. But whatever it is, I am proposing that date at this time.
And to give everyone an assist, your first regular meeting in August would be August fifth.
Thank you, Mr. Colwitz. What was that, August fourth? Fifth, yes. Then with that, I am proposing August fifth to be inserted in that blank.
Vice Chair, there's a quick question for clarification. This is an end date for the subcommittee to report out?
Correct.
Okay.
Then I would also like to add that I am open to amendments not to have that restriction. But at this time, I'm leaving that in.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Chair, it requires a second before we can discuss.
Thank you for that, Mr. Rosell. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Meyer. Is there any discussion on the proposed end date of August fifth, twenty twenty-one?
Actually, I think that's good. I mean, I was gonna just propose sixty days out, but this gives us a little bit of extra breathing room to accomplish that. So August fifth, I'm supportive.
Commissioner Nash.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. I believe that we never voted on the first motion that was seconded by Commissioner Connolly. So can we can we vote on that before we entertain another motion?
Through the 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 Chair, Commissioner Nash, under Roberts' Rule of Order, we had a motion on the floor. And then this is an amendment to that motion. So based on the hierarchical structure of following Roberts' Rules of Order, we have to start with the the second motion here. It's a motion to amend the motion. So we we have a first and a second for that motion. Then there would need to be a vote either up or down. If the majority of the the planning commission vote to approve it, we would then go back to the original motion that was made by Vice Chair Oweho. There could be more discussion, more debate on that, and then there could be a vote on that particular item. But this is the process that we now are required to follow with Roberts' Rules of Order.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for that, Mr. Rosell. See, that's why we need that cheat sheet. So is there any further discussions on the amendment for an end date of August fifth, twenty twenty-one for the subcommittee? If not, Madam Secretary, can we have a roll call on that amendment?
Vice Chair Oweho. Commissioner Meyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez.
Yes.
Commissioner Nash.
Aye.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Chair Chavez.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. So now we're back to the main motion. Now with the amendment of having an end date of August fifth, twenty twenty-one, is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Madam Secretary, can we have a roll call? Before, sorry, before we do that, Mr. Colwitz or Mr. Rosell, is there any comments that you want to provide?
Just for clarity of of the motion, if we could have Vice Chair Oweho reread the motion with the August fifth date for everyone's convenience, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Colwitz, certainly. I move that the chair appoint up to three members either at this meeting or to report out those appointments at the next regularly scheduled meeting to a subcommittee charged with reviewing and revising the rules and procedures of the planning commission and to report its findings and recommendations to the planning commission by August five, twenty twenty-one.
So the motion was by Vice Chair Reho, and then that second on that main motion was by Commissioner Connolly. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing and hearing none. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Vice Chair Oweho.
Aye.
Commissioner Connolly.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez.
Yes.
Commissioner Meyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Nash.
Aye.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Chair Chavez.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you for that.
Commissioner Chavez, this is Scott and Ken again. If we could jump in here for a quick second.
Yes, please.
Thank you all for going through that conversation. So we have two quick housekeeping things, one which could occur now or be delayed, the other one is maybe dependent on the first one. So what that means is if you want to move forward with appointing subcommittee members now, you can do so. In prior commissions and committees that I've been involved with, sometimes that has been an informal show of hands for folks to show the the chair who's interested. So that's something you have the option to do now. The second item is for us to go ahead and identify when the subcommittee is going to be meeting. And I'm going to look to Ken to help us guide through this portion about this type of subcommittee relative to the Brown Act, and what does that mean?
Okay.
So, yes, based on a conservative interpret interpretation, excuse me, of the Brown Act, this subcommittee meeting would be a Brown Act committee, which means that it would need to be at an open and public meeting for purposes of working well with everyone's schedules, we would propose that the subcommittee meeting meet either before the existing planning commission meetings or directly after. Because of scheduling in the council chambers, it becomes difficult to to have a open and public subcommittee meeting on a different night. So that would be the the best manner in which to have the subcommittee meeting at at a time that that meets everyone's schedule.
Now, Mr. Rosell, we can keep it in mind with measure M, we cannot start any city meeting before five P M., correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Is that a deliberation thing, a question that we have to ask all the commissioners, or is that something solely I have to make the decision on?
Well, basically.
Should we go with the first item of the appointment of the members?
Just very briefly, this may impact the availability of some members of of the planning commission. The the time which would likely make the most sense is to have your subcommittee meeting directly after the planning commission meeting. Clearly, the planning commissioners would be here at six P M. or after on the first and third Thursdays of most months. So if you have another half hour, an hour subcommittee meeting after that, that would segue into, you know, the availability of those members of the planning commission, although unless there's a desire to to seek to have it started at five P M. And we would need to coordinate the reservation of the the chambers during that time. But at this point in time, we do not believe there is a conflict.
Okay. Looking to my commissioners, you know, Roberts' Rules of Order, very not a page turner, but it is a book. I will be appointing Vice Chair Oweho as the chairman of the subcommittee. But I also want to look to the other commissioners as to who is actually interested or would be available for either an earlier start time or a later end time. Show of hands if you would be interested in that. Commissioner Connolly.
Either either works.
Okay.
It affects my schedule the same way, so.
Okay. Vice Chair Reho.
And I'm the same with Commissioner Connolly. Either is fine with me. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, this is a three-member subcommittee. Is there anyone else interested now? Either the the commissioners or cameras out, I can participate in the subcommittee, right? Or is it that I can't?
You can participate in the subcommittee. It's can be no more than three members of the planning commission, which you, of course, are a member of. So you would have that ability to appoint yourself under that scenario.
Okay, so I offer it to anyone else. If no one is interested, then I will go ahead and take that.
I had a comment or question. So just to clarify these, whatever the findings are of the subcommittee, it was still, it would go to the committee for final approval or it would go straight to the city council for approval?
It would first go to the the It would first go to the the planning commission as a whole for their their analysis and and also to reiterate what Mr. Kovitz mentioned earlier. Whatever findings of the 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 subcommittee would need to be presented to the and I let me apologize, let me just read this to make sure that I am following this correctly. I believe they need to be available before the meeting. So in a in essence, it would have to be presented to the planning commission in the packet for the next meeting. So for example, if you if the subcommittee met at at the first meeting in June, made their recommendations, they could not be acted on by the planning commission until the following meeting. So it's be in the agenda packet. So it'd be clear to the to the public and also the members of the planning commission what the proposed changes to the commission were.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'll just go ahead and fill in that third spot. And so it will be Vice Chair Arrejo as the Chair of the subcommittee, myself and Commissioner Connolly. If that's I don't need a motion, right? Or?
I thought Commissioner Nash definitely wanted to do this.
It sounded that way, but I wasn't sure.
And just to answer your your direct question, there's no motion that's needed for this. This is your appointment. So at the stroke of the pen or the bang of the gavel or the pointing of the finger, you get to make.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you for that, Mr. Kovitz. So Mr. Nash should definitely know, right? I appreciate it. We'll now go ahead and go on to our next item, which is planning commission business. This is an opportunity for the commissioners to make any brief announcements or disclose what they've been doing outside of the the commission. Commissioner Nash.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. Real quick, I urge all of the commissioners and all of the Oxford residents to please take the City of Oxford Climate Action and Adaptation Plan Survey is available on the on the city's website.
Thank you, Commissioner Nash. Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes, thank you. Just like letting everybody know that I will be out of town in two weeks, so I won't be attending the next planning commission meeting. Hopefully that does cause it, you know, hopefully there's there's still quorum. There's no would be six, so my wife and I are celebrating our ninth anniversary. So see you in in a month. And hopefully everything goes good. Thank you.
Congratulations on that and enjoy. Is there any further comments? I'll just make a couple of quick announcements. As you all know, I sit on BCTC, so I this is all transit related. After Labor Day, Metrolink will be offering Saturday service, which hasn't really been here in Ventura County. That will start at Moore Park and have an AM trip that goes into downtown LA. And then they'll have a late afternoon trip returning back. And as I stated before, kids ride free on Metrolink on the weekends and you can get a day pass for $10 so that you'll jump onto any public transit in LA County. Goco's Transit District had started a late night service. This is runs between 8:00 PM and 11:00 PM, and it's open to anybody. So if you need a a ride late at night, you can just give them a call at at least an hour before, and then they will actually send a vehicle to go pick you up and take you home or to work or wherever you need to go. So that is open for everyone and it's $2 to to ride that service. Now, I'll allow Mr. Kovitz to make the next announcement in regards for tomorrow. And if he doesn't, then I'll jump in. But if there's no further comments from the commission, we'll go ahead and go to Mr. Kovitz for community development staff updates.
Chair Chavez, thank you. There there's you're catching me off guard right now. So actually, I'm not recalling what tomorrow is.
We have the the webinar for the climate action plan, the cap.
Thank you. On Saturday, actually.
Saturday, sorry.
Okay, we all like to think forward to the weekend. So there's a let let me let me give my quick updates. Now, we actually do have an item to go back to with the subcommittee. I just wanted to announce that. We wanted to make sure that we were picking the time that the subcommittee was meeting for the benefit of the public. But we can do that after my quick announcements here. So as I usually start, I'm going to go back in time for just a little bit for recent actions of of other city bodies. So in particular, May 18, there were two meetings that happened on the day that actually had relevance to the planning commission. Both the city council and the Board of Supervisors met and passed a tax sharing agreement that allows us to finally submit the Rio Urbana project that the planning commission had approved a while back. So city staff is gearing up on the recent middle of that application, and then we'll be bringing that before LAFCO hopefully soonish. We'll keep you updated about any action that LAFCO takes on that action. For those of you that were not on the planning commission when that was approved, this is a project that's off of Vineyard Avenue, North Side of the Freeway. The old thank you, the Rio School District School, 167 unit multifamily development with approximately 15,000 to 20,000 square feet of of non-residential space. So that that was great to get that approval from both bodies, and we're very excited about that one moving forward. So more updates coming as as we move into the future. As Commissioner, Chair Chavez pointed out on Sat- Saturday, I forget if it's a 10:00 AM or noon start, the Climate Action Adaptation Plan Workshop is happening. And this is an opportunity for members of the community to find out about what is climate action planning, what is that? And then to give some comments on the document and and help facilitate it, if you will, where it's moving forward. It is a virtual meeting, like many others. There are advertisements on the city's website to give additional information about what that is and how to register. So thank you for that prompt again, Chair Chavez. And then the only other action item for announcement for all of you is June 3, we will have another planning commission meeting. As of this point in time, there's only one project on the agenda. It's a duplex in the coastal zone. So we staff does not believe this is an overly complex project, but we'll bring it before you to have your your regular look at it, comments on it and action on it ultimately. So that'll conclude my comments to all of you, but if we could double back to the subcommittee members and we could collectively figure out when that can subcommittee will meet. We can do that with concurrents. I don't think we need a formal vote for that to occur. We just want to make sure that the public's aware when that'll happen. And really, the two options would be starting at 5 o'clock or immediately following your planning commission meeting.
I would say fluidity to just go right after the meeting, even though I would like the meeting to end earlier, I think, you know, if we knocked it out in 30 minutes, then we would have like a big gap of time. So I think afterwards would just keep it for sake of time going.
Yes, I I agree with Commissioner Connolly. Some of the meetings may last long, and if it does, then the 6:00 PM would cut into the debate, or if it ends early, there'd be a weird awkward 20 minutes where you can't really do anything. So I agree to have it right after. Yeah.
Mr. Kovitz, I'm just curious, because it has to fall because it falls under the Brown Act, a set time has to be set, correct? Or is it flexible as far as setting the time?
My recommendation would be not to give a time certain. It would basically be at 6 o'clock after the planning commission meeting. Because if you give a set time of seven or eight or whatever time, then as was indicated earlier, if the other meeting ends quickly and you could not go into that meeting, so it would basically be at 6 o'clock after the end of the planning commission meeting, which would allow you to immediately segue from the planning commission meeting to the subcommittee meeting.
Sounds good to me. So yes, concurrence for to just follow our regular meeting.
Perfect. And we're going to consider that done at this point in time and we'll create an agenda. So it's a formal item as well that the public will be aware of. Or simply include that as part of your agenda. We'll we'll double check the options on that. And without staff has no additional comments, I will thank you again and stay safe out there and have a good weekend.
Is there any questions to Mr. Kovitz? Since there is no further business, if there's no objection to a journey, a meeting is adjourned to Thursday, June 3, 2021, 6:00 PM. Good night, stay safe, and thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you all. Good to see you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good work, commissioners and staff.